La Liga quiere aprovechar esta oportunidad para agradecer a todos por haber estado esta noche. Tenemos un buen tiempo, deberíamos poder estar ahí, en lugar de mañana. Y quiero señalar que estamos haciendo una transmisión en vivo. Muchos queremos difundir la palabra más allá de nosotros en la sala. Y pensamos que la educación de los votantes es uno de nuestros principales objetivos como organización. También quiero que los Deltas se levanten. Quiero agradecer a este grupo por estar con nosotros. Y uno de ellos sirve como guardián del tiempo. Y Trufilia, ¿querías hablar un poco?
Hola, mi nombre es Trufilia Parker y soy la presidenta del Chapter Alumni de la Comunidad Social de la Cámara de Acción. Así que estamos contentos de estar aquí esta noche. Y eso es uno de nuestros principales objetivos, la educación de los votantes y el fortalecimiento. Estamos contentos de apoyar a la Liga de las Mujeres Votores, la asociación de la Iglesia de la Iglesia y la Historia. Así que estamos contentos de estar aquí esta noche y apoyar. Gracias.
Así que tenemos una elección en el futuro y solo quería advertir a todos que hay muchas líneas de deadline. Vamos a ver. Uno debe registrarse para votar hasta el 17 de octubre, a menos que planeen registrarse este año en su ubicación local. Eso también está disponible para ustedes. El voto temprano ya comenzó y continuará. La línea de deadline para solicitar un voto de absente en persona es las 5 de octubre. Y la línea de deadline para solicitar un voto de absente por correo, que es enviarlo a su dirección, es las 5 también en octubre 28. La línea de deadline para solicitar un voto online es las 5 de octubre. Así que estarán ocupados el 28 de octubre. Si envían su voto completado, la línea de deadline es postmarcada el 8 de noviembre y recibida por el oficio electoral por la noche del 11 de noviembre. Y si están devolviendo su voto por mano, esa línea de deadline es recibida a las 7 de octubre. Y noto que hay un botón de dropbox en nuestro oficio electoral en Millard Drive. También quiero señalar que hay preguntas de voto, como normal, para Loudon. Y la primera es el proyecto escolar para incentivar 268.224.000 dólares para financiar una nueva escuela secundaria en Dallas North. Acelerar la seguridad de la escuela, centro de servicio de la valle, señal de tráfico, renovación de la escuela de Parkview y otras renovaciones y alteraciones de instalaciones de la Comunidad de Loudon. Entonces, para instalaciones públicas, estamos hablando de 74.714.000 dólares para financiar la construcción y diseño de una nueva estación de rescate de fuego para Round Hill aquí en western Loudon. Y el costo de otras instalaciones de seguridad pública que están en la CIP. Y el Recreación Central de western Loudon también está incluido en ese item. Y luego el último es que la Comunidad de Charlotte contrata una deuda para mejoras de transporte de 51.314.000 dólares para el segmento de la calle Cross Trail Boulevard, alrededor de 15 y Braddock Road, alrededor de 50 y Everfield Drive, mejoras de ruta 7 y 690 intercambio en western Loudon. Mejoras de ruta 7, fase 3 para ruta 9 y Dallas Greenway. Y overpress por el esterilismo de la calle de la ONU y el costo de otras aferencias de carretera pública y mejoras de transporte. Así que por favor denles una consideración antes de entrar allí, para que sepan lo que están haciendo. También quiero bienvenida esta noche a Norm Steyer, quien ha sido un excelente moderador de eventos de la Liga durante muchos años. Y noto que él es editor de Loudon Now, que se envía cada semana a más de 40.000 direcciones de Loudon County. Así que hablemos de Norm.
Muy bien, gracias a todos por venir. Gracias a todos por venir. Espero que nos quede aquí hoy aprendiendo algo que no sabíamos, algo que nos sorprendió. Pero debemos apreciar el servicio público. Tengo que sentarme aquí y correr por el oficio y abrir puertas. Así que aprecio lo que hacen los candidatos. Estas cosas pasan muy rápido. Tenemos muchos candidatos. Así que vamos a intentar recibir tantas preguntas como podemos. Empezaremos en general. ¿Hay alguna pregunta específica que tengamos en los tarjetas?
Vamos a empezar con introducción. Cada candidato querría tomar un minuto para maybe describir por qué está reuniéndose o por qué está reuniéndose. Y un poco de introducción de usted mismo, que está corriendo por el oficio.
Así que un minuto de introducción.
Un minuto. Y los guardián del tiempo, por favor levanten sus manos. ¿Usted es un guardián del tiempo? Ellos te ayudarán.
Mi instrucción es un minuto de introducción, dos minutos de preguntas y un minuto para cerrar.
Y pasa a la mía. Y todos nos dijeron dos, así que todos hemos preparado dos minutos de introducción. Muy bien, cambiamos.
Cuando lleguemos a las preguntas, vamos a hacer el ensayo. Te diré la primera pregunta y Suzanne la segunda. Así que un minuto de introducción.
Gracias. Hola a todos. Buenas noches a todos. Gracias por estar aquí hoy. Y gracias a la Liga de las Mujeres Votores y a todos los que están involucrados en hacer este evento esta noche. Es realmente genial que estemos aquí. Tenemos menos de un mes hasta el día de la elección cuando los votantes elijan quién será el próximo alcalde, cuál será el futuro que esperaremos y cuáles son nuestras visiones respectivas para Leesburg. Ser alcalde durante los últimos seis años ha sido un honor. Y bajo mi liderazgo, Leesburg ha navegado los perros de la pandemia global, asegurando a nuestros residentes que nunca perdieron su alto nivel de servicio público que esperaban. Aunque las máscaras y los mandatos de vacuna ya no son más, escuchamos a los expertos y siguiendo la ciencia para proteger a nuestros residentes y a cada uno de nuestros miembros. Hacerlo fue crucial para mantener la operación suave de la ciudad. Nunca cerramos nuestras puertas y nunca perdimos una reunión de la alcaldía. He llamado a más de cien puertas este año, quiero decir a cientos y cientos de puertas. Y he preguntado a todos la misma pregunta: ¿qué les gusta o qué no les gusta de Leesburg? ¿Qué piensan? ¿Cuáles son algunas cuestiones que podrían tener? Y casi a una persona, las respuestas han sido: "Estamos realmente felices aquí. Nos gusta vivir en Leesburg". Y así, no escuchen ningún temor o florecimiento. Solo realicen que Leesburg es un lugar donde la gente quiere vivir y querer vivir. Leesburg fue recientemente clasificado como uno de los mejores lugares para vivir en América. El ocho mejor lugares para vivir en América. Y llegó a la lista de los lugares más seguros de Virginia. Mientras he sido alcalde, hemos mejorado significativamente el transporte, hemos mantenido nuestra calificación triple A, hemos mejorado la seguridad ciber, moderado el departamento de policía de comunicaciones públicas. Y finalmente, no es una cosa simple, hemos proporcionado un oficio para el alcalde en la alcaldía. Si miran el registro de votación del alcalde, verán que mucho de nuestro progreso ha sido logrado con un voto 7-0, mostrando que tenemos una alcaldía que trabaja juntos. Los votantes han selectado consistentemente una mayoría que coincide con mi visión de Leesburg. Y esa visión sigue los hechos, siendo inclusiva y la oportunidad para todos y todos los vecinos. Leesburg es una ciudad fuerte y vibrante, una ciudad donde mis hijos pueden vivir y donde mis nietos pueden prosperar. Y todos son bienvenidos. Pero, por supuesto, nada puede pasar sin planificación sólida, objetivos claros y fuerte liderazgo. Creo que lo he hecho y continuará elaborando esas cosas. Así que, de nuevo, pido que voten como alcalde.
Mi nombre es Suzanne Fox y estoy corriendo por el alcalde. Me gustaría comenzar a agradecer a la Liga de las Mujeres Votores y al Chapter Alumni de Loudon County de Delta Sigma Theta Tau Incorporated por hostear este coro. Las mujeres en esta sala, representando a estas organizaciones hoy en día, son un monumento al legado de la servidumbre sobre el ser. Sus fundadores han dejado sus respectivas organizaciones en capaces de hacer. Y Norm, quiero agradecerte también. Es un honor estar aquí esta noche. He tenido el privilegio de servir al pueblo de Leesburg como mujer del alcalde durante apenas ocho años. Y como vicealcalde durante dos de esos años. Soy dueña y opero dos pequeñas empresas. Soy esposa, madre, una gran abuela. He servido en el jurado de la escuela de Middelberg y estoy muy activa en mi comunidad. Déjenme ser claro que no estoy corriendo por el alcalde por el bien de correr. Estoy corriendo porque me gustaría ver algunos cambios para llevar a Leesburg a un mejor camino. Y creo que yo soy la candidata para asegurar que nuestras voces son oídas y todas las personas, no importa cuál es su背景, son representadas. No se reducirán, no se cerrarán. Puedo ver que hay muchos problemas muy cercanos a mi corazón, pero los que se destacan son la necesidad de una administración de la ciudad justa y equitativa de las autoridades municipales para que los residentes y las empresas sepan qué esperar. La necesidad de fortalecer la relación entre la ciudad y el condado. La necesidad de fortalecer nuestros esfuerzos de seguridad pública, incluyendo estar centrados en un plan de emergencia proactiva. Plan de preparación de emergencia. La necesidad de mantener la política partidaria fuera de la alcaldía. Y la necesidad de preservar y proteger los derechos constitucionales y las libertades individuales y que es un rol de gobierno proteger estos aspectos y no infringerlos. Espero compartir mis pensamientos y ideas contigo esta noche. Gracias.
Buenas noches, damas y caballeros. Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Mi nombre es Colin Doniger. He vivido en Leesburg durante 15 años. Mi esposa y yo hemos criado nuestros hijos aquí. Son de edad secundaria. Y como digo eso, una de las cosas más importantes, o la cosa más importante para mí, es proteger la seguridad de nuestros hijos y la salud de nuestros hijos. Soy un soldado armado. Tengo 20 años de experiencia en gestión de riesgos y administración de seguridad. También estoy certificado en seguridad física. Tengo una certificación profesional de gestión de proyectos, un montón de otros que no voy a hablar. He pasado muchos años administrando programas de seguridad. Entiendo los métodos de construcción y materiales y las mejores prácticas. Tengo experiencia en los procesos de preparación y presupuestos de programas. Y también tengo experiencia extensa en revisar y escribir políticas. Y también soy profesor de yoga. He cumplido 500 horas de certificación de profesor de yoga, que si no están familiarizados, es como un profundo descubrimiento. Más allá del movimiento físico, la filosofía es una parte clave de quién soy y cómo vivo mi vida. Creo en la verdad sobre el tribalismo. Creo en poner siempre los hechos primero. No hay mi verdad, solo la verdad de los demás. Y es así el modo en que tenemos que tomar decisiones. Las acciones hablan más que las palabras. Menos palabras, más acción es lo que se puede esperar de mí. Me preocupa la política partidaria nacional que parece que se esconde en algunas de nuestras reuniones de la alcaldía y decisiones. Y cuando me elegís como representante del alcalde, me centraré en volver a hacer el negocio activo. Gracias.
Gracias también. Mi nombre es John Spence. He sido residente de Leesburg. Mi familia y yo hemos vivido aquí desde 2005. Vivo menos de un año desde aquí. Amo Leesburg. Nunca quiero irme. Hemos criado a nuestros cuatro hijos aquí. He trabajado en Loudon County durante 25 años. Soy arquitecto, con formación y práctica en la firme Sterling. Y hago trabajo relacionado con la construcción allí. Soy solucionador de problemas. Eso es todo lo que hago todos los días. Hay problemas de construcción que cruzan mi cabeza y yo resuelvo. Y disfruto de ese trabajo. Es desafiante, pero lo disfruto. Voy a usar los mismos métodos, la misma ética con el alcalde. Estoy corriendo porque durante los últimos años creo que el alcalde ha cometido algunos errores. Creo que los mandatos de vacuna, por ejemplo, fueron un terrible error. Creo que se ha demostrado que es un error ahora. Pero algunos de nosotros sabíamos hace dos años que era incorrecto despedir a la gente y exigirle la vacuna si no iban a recibirla. Siento tan fuertemente por eso que estoy aquí. Hay muchas cosas que tengo que hacer durante los próximos años. Espero trabajar con varios de estos gente para hacerlo. Muy bien, muchas gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Neil Steinberg y estoy corriendo para la elección de Leesburg. Voy a dar mi agradecimiento al grupo y a la Liga de las Mujeres Votores. Briezo trasfondo. Mi esposa y yo hemos venido aquí y hemos mudado a la Comunidad de Loudon en 1975. Abrió un negocio en el foro de Loudon King, called Photo Works. Ha estado allí durante 43 años. Y hemos mudado a la ciudad en 2008 y he estado aquí desde entonces. Como parte de esta comunidad, siempre he tenido el punto de estar consciente de las cuestiones locales. Esto tiene que ver con la filosofía de la Iglesia de la Iglesia. Y cuando decidí correr por el alcalde entonces y ahora, estar preparado era y es de la manera más paramounte. Dos años antes de que yo planeara, fui al alcalde, reuniones de planificación, reuniones de la Junta Architectural. He tenido el punto de estar trabajando con personal, jefes de departamentos y主任 de procesos en nuestros proyectos de mejora de capital. Ser parte de correr una pequeña ciudad no se puede considerar light. Ni decidir continuar con un wing. Todo se trata de preparación. Y la única otra persona aquí corriendo, una de las tres posiciones que estoy consciente, es Dr. Semino Johnson, que está en la preparación de la casa. Y el alcalde también. Me parece perturbador ver un trabajo muy mal representado en los llamados documentos de políticas y la ley de la PAC Act o los hechos tan mal representados y distorsionados que hacen que la verdad sea irreconocible. Esto señala directamente la falta de comprensión de nuestro propósito y el trabajo de un miembro del alcalde. Soy muy capaz con mi estatus en esta comunidad y mi reputación aquí en esta ciudad. He pasado 42 años siendo parte de esta comunidad. Estoy muy orgulloso de mi personal récord y el esfuerzo colaborativo del alcalde. Como hemos logrado lo que se ha convertido en un éxito notable en los últimos cuatro años en un mundo sin previsto y sin duda muy difícil. Y creo que hemos demostrado lo difícil fue y cuán hemos sido exitosos en los últimos años. Gracias.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Patrick Wilt. Empecé mi introducción. Primero, mi hermosa esposa y mis dos hijas de voz son en el back. Sí, todos saben cómo es. Pero me mudé a Leesburg originalmente en 2014. Abrió un negocio. He estado operando en Black Walmart earlier in my district desde 2016. Así que tengo un tipo de fondo variado antes de eso. Hice un título hace años en ingeniería, un segundo título en administración de negocios. Luego pasé 20 o 25 años ayudando a las corporaciones a mejorar sus negocios y procesos. He hecho todo más efectivamente, disminuir el servicio de cliente, satisfacción, calidad, hacer más de lo menos. Firmas como IBM, Five, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Ford, y demás. Así que muchas industrias diferentes, muchos diferentes entornos. Pero eso fue un gran entrenamiento de habilidad. Y luego empecé algunas organizaciones en USAA, Capital One, Fan United. Y luego me trasladé a la propiedad de una pequeña empresa. Pasé los últimos ocho años en la propiedad de una pequeña empresa y seis años en Black Walmart. Y eso me ha educado mucho. Fue mucho preparación, comprensión de cómo opera la ciudad. Y realmente, qué son algunas empresas. Y como propietario de una pequeña empresa, y hablando de la pequeña empresa. Propietarios de pequeñas empresas y las empresas que crean son realmente un corazón de comunidad. Crean carácter, son unidas, son únicas. Eso es algo que valoro en Leesburg. La pequeña empresa tiene muchas ventajas. El 70 centavos de cada dólar gastado en la pequeña empresa es reinversible en la comunidad. La pequeña empresa no es eso. No es Walmart, no es Target, no es Starbucks. El 60 centavos de cada dólar deja a las empresas, deja la comunidad. Realmente necesitamos apoyar a la pequeña empresa para que sus vidas ayuden a construir esta comunidad. Y eso no es lo que ha pasado en los últimos años. La pequeña empresa ha lidiado un poco y se ha detenido. Y ese es un focus clave para construir esta comunidad, ayudar a la unidad y el sonido de la comunidad a prosperar. Eso es lo que quiero hacer. Gracias.
Buenas noches. ¿Pueden escucharme en el back? Gracias a la Liga de las Mujeres Votores de Loudon County por hospedar. Gracias a los Deltas por estar aquí. Gracias a Norm Steyer por ser nuestro moderador. Mi nombre es Dr. Todd Semino Johnson. Soy esposo, padre, propietario de una pequeña empresa, educador y mascota para Luna, que es un viejo río. Quien decidió retirarse después de solo tres meses de vacuna. Estoy corriendo debido a las promesas hechas por un desarrollador, un desarrollador de vivienda, y su incapacidad de seguir. Yo y mis vecinos hemos sido ignorados por ese desarrollador con nuestros problemas y me he ido a la ciudad para ayudar. Necesitamos a alguien que pueda obtener respuestas de los desarrolladores y yo quiero ser esa persona. Ser un alcalde requiere de un líder. Soy un líder, corriendo dos grandes programas de negocios en una universidad de comunidad en western Virginia. He llevado a cabo mi club de rugby a través de la pandemia. Amo la liderazgo tanto que fui a la Universidad de Old Dominion y obtuve un doctorado. Mi visión para Leesburg es tener un ambiente thriving, seguro y bonito donde todos podamos criar nuestras familias, con más árboles, parques y espacios exteriores a empleos locales. Quiero ser una voz para aquellos que no saben dónde empezar, como yo fue con ese desarrollador de vivienda. Nuestro líder debe verse accesible y responsable. Si estoy electo, hay unos pocos temas que quiero lograr. Primero, necesitamos trabajar tanto con la Comunidad de Loudon como el estado para traer oportunidades de vivienda a Leesburg. Seré un fuerte defensor de Leesburg y la necesidad de más vivienda accesible. En segundo lugar, el tráfico a través de Leesburg es genial. No, estoy bromeando. El tráfico a través de Leesburg a veces puede ser un poco loco. Quiero trabajar con nuestro departamento de trabajo público para asegurar que produzca tráfico y no haya paradas. Finalmente, quiero ser un activista de la pequeña empresa en Leesburg para que podamos ayudar a los empresarios que quieren abrir pequeñas empresas y no saben dónde salir. Si estoy electo, haré un compromiso con ustedes para hacer el trabajo. Como lo he hecho desde el edad de 12 años, voy a empezar a entregar periódicos, Norm. Vivimos en la mejor ciudad de Virginia, así que ¿por qué no hacerlo aún mejor? Espero ganar su voto antes de terminar. Gracias.
Muy bien, gracias. Como pasamos a las otras preguntas, se nos acercaron. Está bien que Todd esté en el micrófono. Así que estamos muy cerca de tu boca, así que todos pueden escuchar. Y las respuestas, dos minutos de respuestas, es decir, 15 minutos por pregunta. Así que no se requieren usar todos los dos minutos, pero si usan, usen más. Así que la primera pregunta que tenemos aquí, empezamos en general. ¿Qué ves como el primer desafío para la ciudad de Leesburg? Y ¿qué harías para corregir ese problema? Y empezamos con Suzanne.
Gracias por esa pregunta. Esta es una de las razones por las que estoy corriendo. Los desafíos que he visto en el alcalde durante los últimos ocho años fue la disminución, personalmente, de mi voz en el alcalde. Tuve que decir las cosas que necesitaba decir, pero me cerraron varias veces y tengo dificultades con eso. Así que mi prioridad mayor probablemente sería ir adelante y sentarse en el escenario para el éxito. Y al hacerlo, al hacer eso, probablemente haría algunas cosas un poco diferentes de lo que he visto hecho en el pasado. Sentarme con cada miembro del alcalde, no importa cuál es la persuasión política o independiente, y hablarles de sus preocupaciones y sus ideas. Y dejarles saber que somos un organismo colaborativo. Y he oído que algunas personas aquí dicen que tenemos un organismo colaborativo. Eso no es mi opinión. Creo que tenemos una ciudad más partidaria. Me gustaría también averiguar si cada miembro del alcalde quisiera reunirse uno a uno conmigo después de reunirse uno a uno con el gerente de la ciudad. Me gustaría que cada persona que fue elegida a la alcaldía se reuniera conmigo con el gerente de la ciudad. Han habido muchas agendas que he dejado fuera y muchos procesos de pensamiento que he dejado fuera. Y creo que para colaborar, todos deberíamos tener comunicación abierta. Así que eso es lo que haría diferente. Gracias.
Así que mi prioridad número uno sería reinstar a los oficiales policiales y los agentes de la ciudad que perdieron sus trabajos debido al mandato de vacuna. La seguridad pública debe siempre ser la prioridad sobre la ideología. Esa decisión simplemente dejó la seguridad pública a la margen y puso la ideología de la vacuna primero. Y lo que pasó es que ya teníamos una fuerza policial que estaba escaseada, que estaba understaffada. Y luego exasperamos esa situación al perder siete oficiales policiales adicionales. Si miras alrededor de la ciudad, puedes ver que nuestros oficiales policiales son a menudo atrapados con comitos de tráfico. Se distribuyen muy thin como es. Y cuando reducimos ese pool de recursos para servir a nuestra condado, o servir a nuestra ciudad, le hace menos gente responder cuando tienes una emergencia. Así que llaman al 911, dice que está teniendo lo que sea que sea una emergencia. Y luego los pocos policías que nos quedan están en el otro lado de la ciudad lidiando con otra emergencia. Bueno, no hay nadie que venga a aparecer y responder para ayudarte. Nuestra prioridad número uno en el alcalde es mantener a nuestros ciudadanos seguros y eso es lo que necesitamos hacer. Gracias.
Esa es una pregunta difícil porque todos parecen tener una respuesta diferente probablemente. Creo que todas estas cuestiones probablemente son realmente importantes y necesitan resolverlas. Creo que uno de los mayores problemas que la ciudad necesita resolver es la vivienda de la fuerza laboral. Hay mucha gente que vive aquí, en esta ciudad, que no puede vivir aquí. No pueden permitirse ni vivir en Loudon County. Y tienen que cambiar. Mi esposa es profesora. Y ella ha trabajado con muchos que viajan a western Virginia y otras partes remotas para trabajar aquí. Y esto no parece correcto. Creo que... No sé cuál es la solución en este momento, pero sé que tenemos que trabajar con Loudon County en eso y encontrar una respuesta, para al menos ayudar, hacer opciones disponibles para las personas que son dispuestas a vivir aquí. Que quieren vivir aquí y no solo trabajar aquí.
Bien, estoy de acuerdo con eso. La vivienda accesible es un problema crítico no solo en esta comunidad, sino en toda otra comunidad en el país. Y el hecho de que no lo hayamos atendido adecuadamente durante décadas es vergüenza en nosotros. Así que en términos de resolver la vivienda accesible, tenemos que trabajar más de cerca con el condado y el estado y disponernos de los programas que son disponibles para financiar. Lo más importante, necesitamos trabajar con los desarrolladores, que primero son interesados en hacer proyectos de vivienda accesible y ayudar a hacer esos proyectos a través de la ciudad, con la ayuda del condado y el estado y asegurarnos de que estamos proporcionando vivienda. La vivienda también es más que sólo sobre alquiler o hipoteca. También se trata de transporte. Si tenemos gente que se comúnen aquí de western Virginia por una hora y media en una dirección, eso es tres horas desperdicas en términos de recursos humanos, no a menos que se lleve a cabo en nuestras carreteras, combustible y tiempo en general. Así que el hecho de que no podamos lograr que nuestras personas que trabajan más duramente vivan y se vuelvan parte de esta comunidad, vergüenza en nosotros. El segundo problema es el medioambiente. Y en muchos sentidos el medioambiente es el tema principal de este. Porque voy a decir, sin él, nada más importa. No podemos resolver los problemas del medioambiente y estamos, como podemos ver, en gran problemas. Muchas gracias. El medioambiente y la vivienda accesible, dos grandes cosas. Ahora, me gustaría resolver una otra cosa cuando se trata de reinstar a la gente que fue liberada o resignada. Lo que necesitas entender al alcalde es que puedes contratar o descontratar a uno de los dos. El gerente de la ciudad y el abogado de la ciudad. Todo el contratar y desatar depende de los recursos humanos y no está dentro de la visión del alcalde. Esto constituye una comprensión de qué es lo que un miembro del alcalde realmente puede hacer. Gracias.
Gracias. Una prioridad que me gustaría centrarme en mi alcalde es ayudar a reinvigorar la comunidad de nuevo. He mencionado mi idea de la comunidad de pequeños negocios. Estas son las familias de pequeñas empresas que crean empleos en la comunidad. De hecho, la mayoría de los empleos en casi todas las comunidades. Y hay un número de, he tenido seis años de experiencia ahora con estas reglas de la ciudad y cómo se definen, cómo se administra, cómo se impone. Y es un tremendo problema para los pequeños empresarios. Así que ellos o, y personalmente sé a gente que no abre sus negocios en Leesburg, or plan to leave Leesburg. And these are tremendous small business families. As I said, they create a lot of jobs for the rest of the community. As an aside, an interesting element in the article, a Fortune article from September, that listed Leesburg as one of the great places to live. When I read the article, the number one element that's pointed out why it's a great place to live is that it's a gateway to Loudoun County, and all the tremendous businesses, opportunities that the county has been supportive of. Wherever he's white, when he's been used, why are you still? Leesburg should be getting some of that prosperity and some of those jobs. And I think Town Council can have a role in defining how we support and encourage our community more effectively. Thank you.
So what I believe to be the top priority here in Leesburg, of course, is affordable housing. So thank you to those who brought that up, because that's also my top concern. I just met with Amy Owen at the Loudoun Community Foundation of Northern Fault Year, and she gave me this handout, and I brought it tonight. The average monthly rent for a apartment in Loudoun County? $2,020. $205,000 is the income needed to afford the median home price of $641,000. I don't know a lot of people in those situations. When I moved here several years ago, we went from paying $700 mortgage in West Virginia to $1,700 and rent for half the square footage. I know a friend who just had to move to Martinsburg to buy because he could not buy here in Loudoun County. He works here. He wants to live here. He cannot live here. Unaffordable. He was paying $1,100 for maybe $100, $200 square foot room, renting a room for $1,100. We have a problem, Leesburg. We need to solve it. We can work with both the county and the state with the current programs that they have to make sure affordable housing happens here in Leesburg. Because if we don't work with them, it's going to go to Loudoun County. But people here, our mechanics, our tattoo artists, people who serve us, our teachers, my husband's a teacher, they need to be able to live here in Leesburg. They want to live here. That's why it's ranked eighth. Fortune magazine ranked us eighth place to live, best place to live. They want to live here in Leesburg. Let's help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone has articulated very important points. But one point that they haven't mentioned that I think is the most overriding point that we need to be aware of is land use. Loudoun County is a very popular place. It's growing very, very quickly. And this impacts Leesburg. We need to realize that most of our land use now is going to be redevelopment. And we need to make sure that whatever is developed represents Leesburg correctly, that it takes care of our community needs, our economic needs, and adds to the vitality of the town. Land use, there are some people on council that are a little too cozy with developing community. When I do meet the developers, when they come in with their projects, it's always to be representative of you, the people. I don't represent the developer. I'm there to listen, but I think of you every time that I'm talking with the developer. And when I vote against redevelopment, it's because I believe it is not the correct thing for Leesburg, that it will change Leesburg's whole dynamic, which are what we so value. We have to make sure that we keep and that we continue to prosper in that regard. Small businesses and economic development are very important to me. And I've been working on that the whole time that I've been there. We've had hundreds of new businesses open here in Leesburg and be very successful. Sometimes, some people criticize me because I do so many ribbon cuttings. But I think that's a wonderful way to introduce a business to the community and let them see what the projects we offer, whether the programs we have here in town, and to make sure that they realize that we're here to help them and that Leesburg is a great place to open a business, a great place to bring your families, and a great place to live. So it's very important that we realize that those two things, land use and economic development, really encompass everything. You know, I was a teacher for 34 years here in Loudoun County. And I was in Loudoun County because I couldn't afford to live in Fairfax County 40 years ago. And this idea of the affordable housing is very, very important. It's not new, and it's not singular to Leesburg. It is a regional issue that we really need to work on. It's become more of a pressure as we become more of a good place to live. And so we need to have that definitely be one of our priorities. Thank you.
Calling me for a general question. And it is, what unique skills or experience do you bring to the council that maybe the other people at the table here and the other people in the council chambers don't have?
So as I mentioned in my intro, I have a long background and experience in risk management, physical security. I understand public safety at a very deep level. I know what it takes to keep this community safe. And as I've said, that's my number one priority, is the safety of children. In addition to that, I've worked in project management and IT and construction and security for almost my entire career as well. And I know procurement processes. I know bureaucratic processes. I know what it's like to operate in a bureaucracy. I know how to look at a budget. I know how to do all these things that we need to do on the council. And in addition to that, I have this security background that I can really leverage and that I would like to leverage. I would like to do more to protect the children in our town. In particular, I'd like to create a commission to just look at ways that we can improve law enforcement and security presence in and around places where children congregate, specifically in our schools. And we know that there's a huge mental health problem across our country right now. And there's been incidents in schools, our elementary schools in Leesburg and all of Loudoun County as well. But Leesburg, which is where I'm focused on, do not have assigned SROs, school resource officers, who are in their school all the time. We can maybe look at ways of offering desk space to, you know, to police officers who do desk work and can maybe do it in the school instead of doing it in the police office. You know, that's just one idea that I have off the top of my head. But I'd like to create a whole commission to look at all kinds of outside-the-box ways that we can improve the safety of the children in our community. Thank you.
Also, as mentioned earlier, as an architect, I deal with a lot of construction issues, problems. There's this urgency in construction. Every day means a lot of dollars. And so I have to be very creative in the way that I sell products. I have to do it economically and quickly and fairly. And I think I have a gift for that. Also, I'm not a business owner. I work for a company. So I think it gives me perspective. Maybe some of these folks don't have nuts. Just that I don't. I have an opportunity to look at it from the outside. I think, I feel like I'm uniquely qualified in that way.
Well, this may sound a little interesting, but my background is actually in theater and political science. If you've ever tried to stage a major production and corral a whole group of people together and pull things off by a deadline, then that's not dissimilar to what we have in the political arena. That aside, I've been in this community for 42 years and have operated a small business. Being part of the Town Council, I mean, there's lots of nuts and bolts. There's no question about it. Lots of nuts and bolts. And we have to understand the processes and what we can and can't do. But in the end, a council member is working, dealing with the lives of the residents of a local level in our community. And I'm not sure there's anything more important than that. So I believe I have had and do have the patience and the skill to listen to a variety of sides. We hear comments about partisanship. It's a political arena, yes. There may be some partisanship. But in the end, the issues we deal with have nothing to do with ideology. They have to do with whether or not the streets are getting cleaned, the snow is being removed, your trash is being picked up, and law enforcement, of course. And all the things that go into the benefits for all of our residents in the small town, including our utilities and so on. So in running a small business, I've been intimately involved in the processes of the town. I have worked with the town. I have never had an issue with my business in the town of Leesburg. If I had a question and knew where to go, I'd help get it resolved. And the town couldn't have been more helpful in helping me not only to begin my small business, but help keep it running. So I've been on the council now for four years, and I believe I have the experience and the demeanor, by the way, in order to continue that job. Thank you.
Thanks. I will actually refer back to my opening, my introduction myself. So for 35 years, my background has actually been working with businesses, some of them very large, and how to do things. I think a lot of Town Council, managing a town, is about effective management. So I've worked with many different companies, many different business processes, operations. How do we do this better? How do we do it with higher quality? How do we make the experience better for our employees, better for our customers? How do we do cost cutting? How do we improve quality? All of these kind of issues across a variety of different industries, from small businesses to businesses that are global and hundreds of billions of dollars. And all of that takes effective management skills across a variety of environments. Now, then I pair that with my last six or eight years. And I've been started from scratch, built and grown, grown a small business. Here in Leesburg, then I've understood a lot about the business community, paid role, hired folks, developed folks, and grown business. So I think all of those experiences give me a valid perspective to help on the Town Council, help Leesburg improve. Thank you.
So for 12 years before I went to higher education, I was corporate accountant, where I dealt with budgets and financing on the millions and billions of dollar level. So I'm not afraid to work with numbers. I'm not afraid to work with a budget. I'm actually looking forward to doing something like that at this level of the town. Asking questions, being able to ask questions to staff. You know, what is this line item? What does this mean? One of the things I just submitted to Norm for the publication coming out later this month on candidates is zero-based budgeting, which means there has to be justification for our line item. We don't just budget to budget. We budget for a reason. Another thing I'm really good at is listening. So I listen to students just about every day with their concerns. I listen a lot more than I talk, because I want to know. I want to understand. So I think I bring that characteristic. And finally, I would say building bridges and working with anyone and everyone. I just met Suzanne for lunch earlier this week. We had a great discussion that we both happened to get this position. We want to work together. It doesn't matter that she thinks one way and I think you think another. We have to work together regardless of how we come from issues. Because again, we are talking about the town, as Neil said. Your road needs to be clear. Your trash, you definitely want picked up. And we want to make sure Idyllic Park is open, right? Because that's a great place to be. So thank you very much.
So the question was...
What unique skills...
See, you didn't forget it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, the very first thing I would bring forward is experience. I have been doing this since 2004. I was elected to the Town Council. I was elected to the Board of Supervisors. I was elected back to the Town Council. And then I was elected mayor. And all those experiences are different. And you learn different things as you go through. But I was a schoolteacher, as I said, for 34 years. And one of the things you learn at school is that you have to learn to run a meeting. And most certainly, if you can't run the meeting, nothing gets accomplished. It's just absolute chaos. So the fact that we have these meetings that seven-zero votes are so common, that we have a agreement on so many issues really reflects the fact that we can work together and that it's a council that works and understands what's going on. I was also the LEA president. And while as a teacher, you're dealing with problems that the children are experiencing with their parents and that sort of thing, the LEA gave me another perspective of working with management and the teaching experience. So I had to help try to negotiate different things during my term as the LEA president. And I remember one time, an administrator sitting across the table yelling at me because he didn't agree with what I said. And so I thought, I'm not going to let that stop. So I yelled back at him. And we yelled back and forth, back and forth. And at the end, we both came up with a compromise that worked for all of us. And so working with people is very important. And the last thing is, I think everybody realizes how important outreach is to me. I spend a great deal of time out in the community. I think it's very important to learn what's going on in the community, what are people thinking, and not expecting the community to come to you. So I have meet the mayor. I have breakfast with the mayor. I have town halls on a regular basis. We just, I just had a town hall with Supervisor Amstad on the widening of Boots Town. Very, very, very good. And it solved some problems that they didn't, the county didn't know as we did. So I think those three things would make me, continue to make me what Leesburg needs in their area. So thank you.
Thank you for this question. Thank you for that. The unique skills that I bring to the table. Well, I do have experience as well. I'm an eight-year council member, and I've enjoyed every single minute of it. I've worked with some good people, and I hope to continue to do so. As far as my background, I have a lot of background in talking to people and working with people. I own a business, a wedding planning business, and you can probably understand how emotional that can sometimes get. And so there's a lot of conflict management involved with that. A lot of things come up, a lot of spur of the moment things that I need to address. And so that's one of the things that I do. The other part of my professional life is real estate. That's also a very emotional thing for people. And knowing how to navigate that just helps pull in some of the skills that's needed here on the Town Council. So I've been asked by, I've been told by our staff, or I actually asked my staff, our staff, why is it that I get complaints? I get complaints all the time. I got complaints about the vaccine mandate. People were very, very interested in talking to me about how it was affecting them. I get, you know, people coming to me saying, my business is being treated differently than this business. So I asked them, and they said, well, Suzanne, you're very approachable. And I took that as a compliment. Not all people agree with me, but I am able to work across the aisle. I actually pride myself on that. And that's evidenced in being appointed vice mayor by a bipartisan council back in 2017 and 18. I actually, with a council member that was with us before Councilmember Campbell, he and I got together. We did not see eye to eye. We were from different sides of the proverbial aisle. But we got together and said, look, we're going to try and make it a point and show one another, show everybody else what it can be like to actually work with one another. We did so. We were put down for it, but we did so, and we're still friends today. So thank you for that.
Okay, we have a couple of questions on a topic that many, several of you have already discussed. discussed. Because it's so important, I want to give everybody a chance to talk about it, which is affordable housing. And this question in particular is about, from my employees, from my business, affordable housing. Can we talk a little bit about, you know, specific, as I said, it's not a Leesburg issue, it's an everywhere issue. But what can Leesburg do to help address it? And also comes to mind that you're going to be, some of you are there in the council, is should Leesburg be the affordable housing capital for Loudon County? Has Leesburg already done enough? So, let's guess, you know, what specific ideas should the council be looking at if you're sitting there in the shop?
I think obviously this is important. I think, as I said, we need to work with Loudon County. I know Loudon County is concerned about this as well as supervisors, and the state of Virginia. I do agree that we need to work with developers because they are the ones who are going to be building these projects by and large. Honestly, I don't know what the answer is. If we knew what the answer was, as Neil said, we have solved it a long time ago. But it's, it's an important issue. And I think, it sounds like we all agree it's an important issue. So I think we all need to resolve this thing come next year. I don't think that Leesburg needs to be the affordable housing capital. That seems like a burden that we don't need to take on. I think we need to do what we can do to solve it here for the people who work here. And that's, that's really the goal.
Well, I have to confess, I'm not exactly sure what it means to suggest that Leesburg should be the affordable capital of Loudon County. Affordable housing should break down along in economic interest in the same way as lots of other methods break down. So we know there are certain segments in the population that can't afford housing at a certain level. So if we can make provisions for those certain types of economic interest, then I think we have done our job. We actually have two projects that have been suggested to us, and they have substantial affordable housing in their entirety. Not just piddling five percent that often gets offered by our development community. If they don't try to buy out of the, buy their way out of it with what we call payment in lieu of, if enough material is actively paid, then they don't have to provide the affordable housing at all. So it's up to us as council members. There are things we can do. First, we approve projects in the end. Planning Commission sends them to us, but in the end, the final decision belongs to us. And we are not obligated to approve a project if we feel it is best serving the interest of all the residents in the community. We simply have to have the political will to do that sort of thing. And I would argue in the, long ago, we really weren't making the best effort. It's definitely at the forefront now. And so we simply have to dig in our heels and say, look, this could be a good project, but it has to work for more residents in the town. If it doesn't, and everyone, and we are displacing people who work here but can't live here, then we are not, we are not serving the best interest of them. And I would argue, we're not serving the best interest of the community at whole, at large, because all of these people make up the rituals that is a community. So we definitely need everybody to be able to reflect.
So I'm going to be able to shortcut my answer a little bit, because I'm going to agree with a lot of what Neil just said. I'm very supportive of that. But I think there's also the nature of affordable housing has two elements. One is the cost of the housing. The other is, like Neil mentioned, the annual affordable housing. That's an income element. I think there's two elements there, that we have to be supportive of the community, is how do we help the business community thrive so they can offer more and better jobs with better income opportunities for people to take advantage of? Okay? And the second one there is, is there something else we can do so that people in affordable housing situations have a way out of the situation? So they can find higher-paying jobs. If those are different skill, higher skilled, are there nonprofit organizations that the town council may have the courage or attract to the area to provide skill training, job training, these kinds of things? Because having, let's say, a low-wage job without a path to higher skill development traps someone in a low-wage job and then traps them in a low-income affordable housing situation. So while I agree with everything about the affordable housing, I think there is a path beyond that to help people more to progress beyond that situation. I think that's something we should investigate. Thank you.
So this is something I've been studying for quite a while, since I started running back in January. So if I'm elected on November eighth, there are a couple of things come January I'm going to propose. The first is any new development that is brought to the town of Leesburg that has affordable housing should be moved to the top of the list. It should be looked at and reviewed long before the others. Number two, we can waive fees or reduce fees for those houses. The margin on building houses is small. So if we can encourage developers to build affordable housing by giving them some margin, we should do it. Number three, look at the town code and see what is discouraging affordable housing. Is it square footage? Is it how tall the building is? We have to look at that to make sure that we are not discouraging affordable housing right here in Leesburg. Finally, this is probably a more long-term issue, lobby the state for more ADUs, affordable dwelling units. So the state caps that. We can work with the state, lobby them to increase that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we having fun yet? First, I think first, one of the most important things we need to do is define what's affordable. What's affordable to me may not be affordable to you, or may not be affordable to someone else. And so when we talk about affordable housing, all of us have a different image, or many of us have a different image as to what affordable means. And so we really need to, to really get down to the definition of what is it that we want, and what is it going to look like. Secondly, we have to recognize, as I said, this is not a new problem. This is not a new problem that just started. This is a problem that I experienced forty years ago. And that's why I had to move to Loudon County. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't still be continuing to try to find solutions, absolutely. And I would say the number one solution is that we demand that we have a living wage. When we have workers that can't afford to live in an area because they're workers that aren't paid well enough to live in that area, there's not much you can do affordability-wise unless you get the points across that we need to get a living wage. And we do have programs from the state and then the county, and we should be looking at those more closely. You know, when Todd's question about why do we not have more affordable housing, bottom line is, the developers are there to make a profit. Affordable housing is not profitable. To build single-family homes is what makes the most money. And that's what they're going to look for because they're trying to make a profit. It's their business. They most certainly want to do that. We can understand that. But we, as people that, you know, on the town council, we need to make sure that we are making it very clear that we're looking for alternatives. And so affordable housing most certainly is very important. It's a very complicated issue. It's a very regional issue, and it's a very important issue. Thank you.
Definitely, I had in the three of my efforts that we have a hard time pinning down the actual definition of affordable housing. Before we can do something about it, we have to know what we're doing with this. One of the things that I think that we actually can do, and this comes, comes to one of the things I said at first, is try and repair or at least foster a better relationship with the county. The county ultimately administers our affordable housing policy, our affordable housing trust. So one of the things that we could do, there's money in the trust from the developers that the mayor just talked about, who puts money into that trust. I feel like if we work with the county, we garner the trust, we garner the cooperation, we garner the communication that's necessary between town and county. We might be able to actually, you know, benefit from that trust. But again, that county does administer that. We often wonder about affordable housing and business and economic development. Well, as everybody said, it's an issue here. If we're going to bring in business and economic development, we must have more housing. The two are not the choices. They go hand in hand. And so the other thing I would propose is allow for more accessory dwelling units. Sometimes we want our families to live with us. So let's get some processes in place to put more accessory dwelling units in on our properties. You know, the devil's in the details with that, but that would be very, very helpful. And I just wanted to let you know that the very last thing, we did have a vote very recently on Virginia Village. And Virginia Village afforded us a lot of, really good number of affordable housing dwelling units. But our planning commission, going back to seven-zero votes, voted seven-zero against it, and our, and our council voted to go ahead and pass it by a four to three vote. That was a very narrow vote. So we don't always have seven-zero votes, but when we do have seven-zero votes, it doesn't have anything to do with politics. Thank you.
So I agree that we do need to define what is affordable housing. Is a $700,000 townhouse an affordable housing? I mean, I wouldn't call that affordable housing. The bigger issue that we need to look at too is, I hear so much about affordable housing. Affordable housing is a hot topic that everybody wants to, you know, kind of, you know, show their virtuousness in finding affordable housing. But is there actually a demand for it? I mean, is there a demand for it? I don't know. We maybe need to find out if the person living in West Virginia is living in West Virginia because he can afford a much nicer place out in West Virginia than he could here. I live in a townhouse. I could afford a much bigger place out in West Virginia as well. And there's a national element to it that we need to look at, that, you know, our housing rates are going up all across the country. So what is affordable? And there's no answer to that question right now, just to be clear. There is not an answer. And what maybe could be considered affordable, we have lots of affordable housing in Leesburg right now. We have Leesburg Apartments. We have many units that could be considered affordable housing. Do we already have enough in the league to quota? Is there actually that demand for all this affordable housing that everyone's talking about? I don't know. And the last thing I want to say is, one of the signs of the decline of society is this time when we start to create all these welfare programs. If you look back at our society in history, it's all the same. And what I teach in my yoga classes is, I go in with this mindset of believing that people are capable of more than I think they are. And encouraging people to be stuck on this government program for the rest of their life doesn't do that. I'd rather focus our energy on things that help people lift themselves up into a better situation than stay stuck where they are. Thank you.
Okay, this question is, I think our leaders should be able to work with different types of people, value diversity and equality. How will you do these things? And maybe we can expand that into a little bit of the town's efforts for the diversity commission and some of the other things you all talked, the townhouse has talked about over the past couple of years.
No offense, Norm, I'm not quite sure of how we're defining this question. We are a community. We are a community made up of all types of people, all types of economic strata. And we always are, in our work, are looking to see how we can best serve all communities in the town. As have been, you've got some witnesses in the past history of the town of Leesburg in Loudon County. Yes, there have. No question about it. Is the town of Leesburg, in my opinion, in a better place than it was several decades ago? Yes, it is. Our hiring practices are much different. We do have a diversity commission, and they work tirelessly, I might add, to inform us of ideas and situations that they think we need to address of how to better serve a community. And we get that kind of information from Loudon, by the way. It's very difficult. As a council member, you should understand. We don't have staff. We don't have secretaries. We don't have offices. The mayor does. So all the information, all the information we glean, we have to, we get on our own and also in conversations with our commissions and staff. So there's no question that we are aware of issues, both economic and others, within the community. We see them all the time, and we're asked to address them all the time. We work to come up with the best solutions possible to help every member of our, of our community of Leesburg. And while we may not be perfect, I think we're doing a fairly decent job. And part of that, by the way, since there have been comments about law enforcement, our law enforcement, Leesburg Police Department, works very hard throughout all the communities to best address the various issues that they come upon. Thank you.
Norm, just to make sure, please just repeat that question, because it's a curious question.
Could the speakers do a little better with getting the mic up here? There's some people in the back that are not getting every word.
How's this? Is this a little better?
That's my turn.
I'm not mic trained, so I'm, I'm learning. Sorry. Thank you.
The question was, I think our leaders should be able to work with different types of people, value diversity and equality. How will you do these things?
Okay, I think that's the part I got. Leaders should value working with different types of people. And that's, it struck me as a little odd because for decades, that's just a normal standard of behavior. I worked with, let's say, different types of people, religions, ethnic backgrounds, different countries, recent immigrants, economic income. I've been hired by people different than me. I've worked with people different than me. I hired people different than me. Everyone is a valuable individual. They have their perspectives. I like other people that are different than me to listen to me. And I treat people the same way. It's a matter, I think, of just individual respect. So I think it's a very normal behavior. I practiced that for many decades. And I think Leesburg is a very welcoming community, has a lot of different folks in it. And I think at this point, Leesburg generally does very well. And as a leader, where there are problems, like I've done in my business career, it's listening and valuing and appreciating other perspectives is a key attribute. And I think that's a base level of respect that we owe to everyone. All right, thank you.
So statistics you may not know about Leesburg, thirty-eight percent of our population is minority. Twenty-one percent were not born in the United States. Not born in the United States. Fifty-four percent have at least a bachelor's degree. And seventeen percent of individuals five years or older speak English and another language. So we're talking about a very diverse population in Leesburg. So we have to work with everybody, as we always should. Being a higher ed, this isn't something that's ever been an issue for me. So I run a business program. Whoever comes in, I'm welcoming. I don't care. They want, they want to obtain a degree and better themselves. Doesn't matter skin color, religion. If they're six foot eight, doesn't matter. We work with everyone. And I think as a town council member, you do the same. You have to be also in the community, in these communities, every one of them, so that you understand their need, their struggle. Thank you.
So, as I understand the question, this is, the issue of diversity is very important. And it has been important to me and to other council members for years. Vice Mayor Martinez, who's sitting in the audience and I, many years ago, realized that we had, our hiring population in the town was almost exclusively white. And to our horror, we didn't understand why. And we asked the town staff to start looking into it. And when we, when we finally realized we had, they didn't understand either. So we developed a task force. And the task force came together, and they came up with ideas that, they represented the community that Todd is talking about, that all the different communities that we have here. And we tried to get as many in the, in the group together. And so they came back with recommendations. And those recommendations made a huge difference to our hiring practices. And they were things as simple as, we were, we were using, we were reaching out to different hiring places that were not particularly aware of minority hires. We weren't reaching out to communities of color at all. And so when that started, when we realized as we were going through all this, all the data, that, boy, we had really been missing a whole population, the difference became very apparent. We have a chief of police who is, who is African-American. We have an assistant chief who's African-American and a woman. We have a number of police officers and leadership positions that are gay. We have all sorts of people within the staff that are people of color. And that... And that came about because of the whole concept of, we have to look differently. We have to outreach to that community. And it's very important, again, I go back to the outreach is so important. But one of the results of that task force was that we created the Diversity Commission. And if you don't think that was a fight, you go back and look at those tapes. Well, we got it, and we put it in place. But now, we're struggling because things have been successful, and people have started, stopped attending the meetings, stopped participating. And so, anybody knows, anybody that would be interested in the Diversity Commission should let us know because we need people.
I have a little bit of misgiving that there's an assumption that people don't value each other as human beings. I think that's the first and foremost, where we should value one another as human beings. But I do believe that the town needs to be committed to a zero tolerance discriminatory policy, and I believe we live up to that. We also want to make sure that diverse voices are heard and represented, not shut down and not diminished. We need good working relationships with stakeholders. I have had some good relationships with, with the leadership of the N W A C P. We have been able to get a few things done, and I'm proud of that. I'm not in favor, though, of policies that actively discriminate against some groups in the name of diversity and equity. I do have an issue with that, and so I think we go the wrong way when it comes to that. So, to me, I'm totally committed to the principle of fairness for all, for both citizens and for businesses. Our police, I will reiterate, our police and our diversity commissioner are very, very good with community outreach. I really am proud of them. When we did form the Diversity Commission, it was a struggle. Some saw it as, hey, the Diversity Commission would like to look into public record, or human resources records. But we got it to a point where that wasn't the case anymore, and then they were able to flourish. But the biggest part of diversity for me, and I think that should be with any governmental body, is to make sure that we have and champion diversity as well. Thank you.
Diversity of thought, that's what I heard when I heard the original question, and then I heard a lot of majors talking about diversity of skin color or individual characteristics. There's only one race, the human race. When I joined the Army, they told us everybody's green, and that's the philosophy that I've always lived by. That's all I see is green. I teach yoga. It's the most inclusive place on the planet Earth, probably. There's so many different people from so many different backgrounds, and they all come together. And speaking, going back to diversity of thought, I have so many friends there that have a very different viewpoint on politics and the world than I do. I'm conservative, obviously, no surprise. And very liberal friends, and they all tell me, Colin, I'll support you because it's you, and I know you, and I know how you are, and I know that you love everyone, and that's the truth. We're all God's children. Equity always equalizes downward. I will never support equity, but I will support diversity of thought. I will support nonpartisan politics, and I will work across the aisle. We can disagree on policy, but we can all love each other at the same time. Thank you.
Thanks. If you're with Colin just said, I think the diversity of thought, that is not an issue for me. I think the best ideas should always prevail, and I've heard some really great ideas that I had in the public. So, I'm the council. I think that I will be able to listen well and act, change when change is required, and stand up for what I believe in when I, when I think that's required. So, I have no trouble working with anyone. I do that now. I have a lot of contractors who don't like me because of the things that I make them do. And, but we can still get along. I can still respect them, and they can still respect me because that's what, that's what we're all about. Regarding diversity of, other kinds of diversity, again, I don't think about, I do a lot of work in the Hispanic community, with the Tree of Life. I don't think of, the Tree of Life is a ministry in Leesburg. We call the people that we work with partners because we're not really thinking of them as people that we're helping, but the people that we're serving and loving. And I just, it's not, it's not an issue for me to, to work with people, to, to love them.
I've got a lot of questions here to get them in. This one is, how do you plan to repair the relationship with the county, the board supervisors? I still advocate for Leesburg. And let's throw into that, you know, should the town consider city status? Would you, as a council member, consider city status to address the double taxation questions or those type of issues? So, county relationships.
So, I think it'd be easier to discuss specific issues. Being a council member, being a business leader, there are plenty of issues that have to be addressed. Some of them are beneficial for one party. Hopefully, you can negotiate, understand positions, and resolve things which are mutually beneficial. Those are, I think that business standpoint is beneficial in all areas. So, if there's a dispute with the county, we advocate specifically for the residents of Leesburg, but we live within a larger community of Loudoun County. So, I don't want any relationship or any issue to become confrontational, and when that's happened in the past, I think that's unfortunate. That should be avoided, and a different leadership strategy should be taken. We should be able to find productive ways to accomplish what is possible for Leesburg and county. So, that's just a general statement. Lauren, the second half of that question? The city status. I will not, I won't say I have a predetermined position on that. It would be something open for discussion. I'd be open to looking at it. I think there's a lot, it would be a lot of complications in that. And so, that would be a very detailed investigation. But I won't predispose that to a decision at this point, but I would be open to discussing it. Thank you.
So, going to the relationship with the county, this is something I actually ask probably just about everyone I've met. What is the issue between the town and the county? The thing which you have to do is build bridges. You have to meet with each supervisor individually. You have to figure out why we have this relationship, and then you have to meet with the county staff and figure out, is that where the issue is? I will take the time to do that, because I think it's very important that, as a town of 50,000 people, the largest town in the state of Virginia, with Blacksburg second, we need to get along with our county. We need to have great relationships with our county. So, whatever that entails, meeting them a daily basis, breakfast, that's fine. But I do know, when I go to see Chair Randall, that I'll be taking Garrett's popcorn from Chicago, just to let him know. Second part of that, city status. At the moment, with the information I have, I would not be in favor of city status, only because it requires the city at that point of Leesburg, if it becomes Leesburg City, to do a lot more, such as schools, health department, animal control. I'm not in favor at the moment. Not saying I would never be in favor in the future, but at the moment, no, I don't see where I would vote to be the city of Leesburg. Thank you.
Here is where experience comes into play. Having been both on the council and been representative, the supervisor representing Leesburg, I can tell you that relationships do get a little tight sometimes. They get a little uncomfortable. It depends on the issue and what's happening. I meet with supervisor on staff monthly. We have gone over issues such as the airport overlay district, which they didn't realize they were impacting Leesburg's airport, and that was able to be changed. We worked on the budget items such as Evergreen Road, completing that, finally finishing that up. The county gave us $2 million for Redmond Park. There's lots of things that we can work with, but there are always going to be times that you can't work with each other, that you disagree, and that you, as a supervisor, are representing your district, because they are very district oriented. We, as council members, represent the whole of Leesburg. So, so sometimes the conflict comes from that, that variation. I also am a member of COLP, which is the Coalition of Loudoun Towns, and the mayors meet once a month. And I can tell you, every one of the mayors talks about how difficult the county is. And like Todd, when I first took over, I met with all of the board of supervisors. I can talk to any of them. They're very friendly. It's not a problem. But it goes back to what they are representing. They, they represent a district, and it may not, and one of them said to me the other day, why would I approve that for Leesburg when it doesn't help my district? And so, you've got to get beyond those barriers of how it helps your district or doesn't help your district. And sometimes that's not easy to do. So, so you're going to find that there are times when the relationships are not good that are therefore, for most, the majority of the time, they are. And I would challenge anybody to call Chair Randall and not get a phone call back, because she will give it back to you, and she'll talk to you. She'll always be willing to talk to you. As for the city status, not enough information in any way, shape, or form. We, if we were to even begin to consider that, we most certainly would have to be in a position where we have data from a study that would tell us what would be our ramifications of becoming a city. Would I be close to it? No, I can't say I'm close to it. I don't know that I'm for it either. I just, I'd have to have much more data.
Thank you again for this. Again, it comes back to building trust, building corroboration, and open communication. I think there's been a lot of miscommunication that's happened from county down to town and vice versa. And so, for me, if we just talk to the county, not when there's just a problem, but always, let's just go to the source. Mayor Burke is right. Chair Randall did give us an open invitation to contact her at any time, and I think that should be used. As far as going to the source and asking for what's needed, Leesburg, you know, is we're in a double taxation situation, and we do sometimes have to say, oh, county, we really could use help with this. There is a case in point. There was one time where I was serving on the advisory board for the M T A, and they, they went ahead and told us, Leesburg, that we weren't going to be getting anything at all in this year's budget. But county got, you know, quite a bit. So, what I decided to do is just go to Chair Randall, and it was a Zoom meeting because it was during COVID, but I said, this is what we need. And I think she was a little taken aback about it, but it did happen, and we got what we needed that way. As far as city status is concerned, everybody's right, there's not enough information, and we would need to do some sort of study. The town has worked just fine as a town for all these years. However, with the double taxation issue, the way that things are growing, city status might be an option we'd want to explore. So, I have 30 seconds. So, if it's in the best interest of the town, and we have the will on the council to explore, I will definitely explore it. Thank you.
So, I do agree with Mayor Burke that we need to work through our, you know, our representative on the board of supervisors. And that's where our first line of communication and relationship, relationship is with that supervisor who's there on the board to represent us at Leesburg. I think that there are times where we need to take a hard stance, like Compass Creek, and do what's best for, for our residents of Leesburg, even when it may not please the, the board of supervisors. We are here to look out for the best interests of the citizens of Leesburg, and that's, that's what always has to come first. And any relationships or anything like that we can develop with the board of supervisors, great, but number one priority is representing the people of Leesburg and serving their best interests. I also think that there are some, some lessons that we can take from the board of supervisors and how we might do some things better. It takes about two years to get a site plan approved for development here in Leesburg, whereas the Loudoun County does it in about 90 days. It didn't always, it wasn't always that way. So, there are some important lessons we can, we can learn from that. As far as city status, I would like to see the numbers. I would be opposed to it. I can't say it's like my number one agenda item or something like that, but, you know, if the numbers made sense, and it was, it looked like it was in our best interest, then, you know, maybe I could get behind it, but I just don't have enough information to give you a good answer or make a decision on that. I won't make any decisions where I don't have the information in front of me. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree that the double taxation issues, really big, and it hurts the people that live here. We need to resolve that as much as possible. I think there's, there's opportunity to work with the council, but I think that, with the board supervisors, I think council needs to be unified when they do that. I think council needs to be in agreement and go forth strong and do what's best with Town of Leesburg. The supervisors have a lot of issues to deal with, and we can't be forgotten just because we're a small part of Loudoun County, a big part of Loudoun County. On the city issue, no, I, I would be opposed to that. I don't think that's a good idea. I think the town, as Suzanne said, the town's been strong for a long time. I don't think we need to become a city.
Well, I'm going to take a slightly different tack. I appreciate that we have had issues with the county, but in many respects, the town and the county do function well together. The county does have services that the town doesn't provide, health department, for example, animal control, for example, and the biggest one would be schools. So, in that respect, as far as our interactions with the county and the town, things have operated pretty well. There have been, on our two friendly, high-profile situations, that I think have brought this whole issue to the forefront. The first one was Segrefield, which the county did string upon the town and actually some of their own supervisors rather suddenly. And the issue for the town was whether or not Kincaid Boulevard was going to open. And we insisted, as was promised, that Kincaid Boulevard would not open. And the neighbors held us to that promise, and we succeeded with that, and lo and behold, Segrefield got finished, and Cross Trail Boulevard is done and all is well. So, that situation kind of resolved itself. The second biggest issue happens to do, and this is all public information now, with the Microsoft Data Center that sits on Compass Creek. We have been negotiating with the county for over three years and trying to work out a revenue sharing situation with just one data center, and that has been a very contentious situation. And we are now, as you have seen in the newspapers, involved in an annexation. Well, we shall see. Now, the board wants to come and meet with us all one-on-one, or two-on-two, I should say, because you can't have any more than that before you actually have a public meeting. So, yes, there are differences with the county, but there are also lots of situations where we function well with the county. City status, what everybody's failed to mention at this table is, right now, in the state of Virginia, there's a moratorium on city status. So, even if we wanted to do city status, we can't do it until the state lifts that moratorium. We might consider allocating funding for the reality of city status, but there's sometimes it's a stomach for spending funds on a situation that we're not sure we can actually control. Thank you.
We're going to wrap up, so we give plenty of time for one-on-ones. Candidates are going to stay here, and they, they have their, their swag to give out, their signs to give out, and maybe some of you can house us with satins and chairs. Sound planning? Okay.
Who starts? I'll start.
Okay. When I reached out to the council last year with my housing issue, the mayor quickly responded. Not only did she respond, but she met me and my neighbors, and then with the developer. This is what I think of when I think of what a town council member does, someone who will respond, who will be accessible, and act on citizen issues. Being a town council member is a public service that I do not take lightly. Connecting Leesburg citizens with services- Connecting Leesburg's citizens with services or help they need is what I envision. Listening to all sides of an issue is what I envision. If we have met, or you know me, I love to listen. A public servant listens much more than they talk. The next four years could be tough. We could be facing a recession. If property assessments decrease, we are going to have to consider cutting expenses or raising the tax rate. Do you want someone who has led through tough times such as I have on town council? Out of 2,000 places analyzed to live in the United States, Fortune Magazine recently ranked Leesburg the eighth best place to live for families. They analyze our education, livability, aging resources, general wellness and financial health. That ranking is not a fluke or an anomaly. The investments made in Leesburg have been planned and they are real. Even with that ranking, we have work to do there at Leesburg. We need more affordable housing. We need to find solutions to our traffic backups through town and we need to support our entrepreneurs. It would be an honor to serve as your next town council member and I hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Wow, time flies. We're having fun. Thank you all for being here tonight and thanks to sponsors for hosting this event and thanks to the candidates for all being here. It was very interesting to hear everybody's point of view. And again, I will have to bring out the Forbes magazine selected Leesburg as the best place to raise a family in the United States and because we have become a vibrant and exciting place to call home. And Leesburg is a safe community with many attractive amenities, good schools, safe neighborhoods and excellent services. Contrary to some people's opinions, our town has become a model town and a destination where people want to live and people want to come here. And so we're going to have some problems that we'll be solving and working with, but that's, those are good things that people want to be here. As your mayor, I'll continue to work with the council to make Leesburg economically strong, to use our tax dollars efficiently and effectively and to stand up to any development that does not enhance our community's economic, social or environmental needs. You all know me. I've lived here for 40 years. I've been active in the school system. I've been active in the community. I've served on the town council. I was your board supervisor and of course, the mayor for the last six years. I want to continue this positive movement forward and therefore I ask your vote to ensure we continue our progress. Thank you very much. I think thank you to everyone who came out this evening, who participate, who participated in this and to our gracious hosts. Thank you again. Norm, once again for your providing the top-notch moderation that you always do. Some here this evening may recall the tagline from my previous town council campaigns, principle, not partisanship. Principles, not partisanship. That tagline may be more relevant today than it was eight years ago. There is no room for political activism in town policymaking. As your next mayor, I will make it my mission to make sure that everyone is treated with the respect that they deserve. I want to hear from everybody, whether Republican or Democrat or somewhere in between, whether you're 20 years old or 90 years old or somewhere in between. I want you to know that I firmly believe that all voices matter and should not be diminished nor shut down. I would like to see town council focus on rebuilding a robust police force, ensuring that Leesburg is once again one of the safest places to live in Virginia, as it was in 2019, where those statistics say that we are the safest, the safest town. Those are not the statistics today. I would like to see us take a more proactive and aggressive role in addressing our pressing transportation issues as Todd and I discussed the other day. We were coming in on a Saturday and it took six, six turns for me to get through the light of Plaza Street. It wasn't a good thing. I would like to see us create regulatory and administrative environment for businesses that's more hospitable, more fair, transparent and predictable. And lastly, I would like to see council be much more collaborative to improve the lives of our citizenry. I am 100% confident that we can get Leesburg on a much better path forward. I've enjoyed these past eight years as your council member and I've enjoyed the service to our town and its citizens, but it would be my privilege to serve as your next mayor. Thank you and thanks.
My goal is to get Leesburg back to business. We can do this by minimizing proclamations. I don't know if you've ever watched a town council meeting, there's a lot of time spent on proclamations. Some of them have partisan element, but many of them are things that I agree with or anybody would agree with, yet we spend an inordinate amount of the meeting time focused on making proclamations for things just to, I guess, make, you know, make people feel inclusive that are just unnecessary. They don't provide any value to, or benefit to members of the town for the council to say that just makes us kind of feel good about, you know, virtue signaling our inclusivity. I think all proclamations should require a unanimous vote and I think proclamations should either recognize the achievement of a citizen or those proclamations should provide some kind of informative value to the members of the town. We can spend, our time can be much better spent than just doing one proclamation. We can streamline our processes. We can remove red tape and we need to remove the subjective interpretation of a lot of our policies, especially with architectural policies and development, so that it's very clear to the developers and to the builders, what exactly they're supposed to do to the business owners. We need to establish and stick to our processing timelines. If you're familiar with the Wolf initiatives, at one point, we had, we were able to roll back that two-year site development time to a much shorter timeframe based on the Wolf furniture challenges that occurred several years ago and that and we've gotten back to the two-year timeframe for that site development plan. We also can look at how we can lower taxes. Our tax revenue has gone up in three years in property tax, 20%. We have all this new revenue and yet our debt has increased, just our debt services that we're paying have increased by $6 million over three years. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of debt. We need to look at all these projects that we're planning and figure out which ones are essential and not pay with it on the credit card. Thank you.
Thank you. I also thank you for having us here. As I said at the beginning, I love Leesburg. I want to serve Leesburg. I served, I have served Leesburg in many ways, the people of this town, through lots of different organizations, through my church, and I love doing that and I want to continue to do that as a member of the town council. I feel like I have a lot to offer. I have a reasonableness and a wisdom that I actually would love to share and I'd be grateful to get your vote to do that. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to really race through this because I have a lot of data to give you since everybody keeps talking about the lack of collaboration and the lack of success in the town. Remarkable success. First of all, we successfully navigated through a pandemic that no one saw coming and it came at a moment's notice. We had no time to plan for it, yet we managed to successfully navigate through it. Regarding public safety, we've increased the budget for LPD. We have a $20 million plus construction project planned for an expanded LPD, improved CAD, body cams, mobile dispatch units, increased salaries for sworn officers. We have a vastly improved IT infrastructure in both hardware, software, networking and cybersecurity, where it's so much better off and that's one of the things that got it through the pandemic. Upgrades of both our drinking water and wastewater facilities aided businesses of all types during the pandemic, including temporarily relaxing regulations in the downtown area, continued closure of King Street on most weekends to facilitate a family-safe, relaxed outdoor dining and gathering experience. Greater commitment to public art, greater commitment to our underserved communities. Now regarding business, fiscal year '21, 377 new and renewed business licenses. Fiscal year '22, 284 renewed and new and fiscal year '23, up to 72 now. Pet firms that have decided to locate here, Stryker, EPL Archives, Stedviz IP, Quantum Leap, Co-Fetch, Veteransoft, Custom Software Services and Rayhow, which has been here for decades. I don't have to go over the fact that Forbes ranked us as the best place to live again. Now, here's something that's very important. In our, in our due diligence with preparing our annexation to the county, we did operate some research with an outside consultant. They told us the town of Leesburg does more with less than any other jurisdiction in the area. They couldn't believe how successful we are based on our tax rate and what our staff does for us. We have a fantastic staff. The employees love working for them and I got to tell you, they make us look good. My name is Neil Steinberg. I'm running for Leesburg County Council and I would certainly appreciate your vote now or sometime run up to November 8th. I now want to thank you all for coming and I want to thank League of Women Voters for hosting this event and I certainly want to thank Norm for presenting us with all the interesting questions. Thank you all very much.
I love Leesburg. My family loves it. There's a lot of charm, character, uniqueness in this town. We enjoy it here. I've invested in this town personally, my business, you know, deeply for the last eight years and I continue to plan to do that. As great as the town is, I think there's future opportunity. There's people like me, that I talk to, who also want to invest in Leesburg, create jobs, enhance the charm and the uniqueness and what they offer to all of us residents in terms of products and services, restaurants, entertainment. And I think the way the town has historically handled regulations and administration of such has been difficult and it's been administered unevenly and inconsistently. And I think in terms of effective businessman, helping Leesburg grow and enhance the community so that we can grow effectively and maintain the charm and uniqueness, that some of those things need to be addressed. And my skill set, my background and my specific business experience here in Leesburg for the last eight years has helped, will help to do that so we can continue to grow and prosper. So I look for your support, November 8th. And my name is Patrick Wilt and thank you very much.
Thank you all. I've spent a fair amount of time with these folks and I always appreciate hearing these things. I've learned something new. So thank you very much for doing that. For you all in the audience, stick them out and talk to them some more. The folks at home, when you see these people come up on your doorstep and knocking on your door and you see them on the Ring camera, open the door and go up to them. Thanks a lot, everybody. Appreciate it.